Good evening, welcome to the Falls Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Monday, September 22nd. We will begin with a salute to the flag, please. Thank you. And Mr. Shepherd, can you call the roll, please?
Yes.
Here?
Here.
All right, thank you. Um, you want to comment on our executive session, Mr. Clark?
The Board held an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss three matters of litigation and several personnel matters.
All right, that takes us to public comment. Is there a sign-in sheet, or, Rich, can you grab the sign-in sheet? Thank you. Uh, the first name's Scott Van Blorkham.
Can I just talk right in here?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, my name's Scott. I live at forty-one Pear Tree Lane. Um, and I'm here today to discuss a letter that our, I believe it's our street received. Um, to give some context, the letter said, "Hello neighbors, I am making you aware of suspicious activity noted to be occurring at thirty-six Pear Tree Lane. This home appears to be a recovery house. It is not licensed or registered. As of March twenty twenty-five, an LLC registered to thirty-six Pear Tree address with the name Serenity Recovery Residences LLC. The buyer of the home is Jessica Cook and her husband Chris, who are CFO and CEO of Reprive Recovery, an inpatient alcohol and drug rehabilitation detox facility in Ewing, New Jersey. This couple also runs multiple recovery houses in Florida. Jessica is a certified recovery administrator. Falls Township has had multiple complaints and neighbors voicing concerns. This couple is trying to get a permit to pass that this home is a group home. A group home is a non-transient residence with houses, which houses medically and physically handicapped people. Recovery houses are only allowed in highway commercial districts in Falls Township. Pinewood is not a highway commercial district, hence why they are erroneously trying to say it is a group home. There are multiple different vehicles with out-of-state plates constantly coming and going to and from this home. There are various transient men out smoking cigarettes, different men and women at all hours, arriving and leaving, many individuals congregating at all hours. This neighborhood should not have a recovery house with transient recovering addicts or alcoholics. A residential neighborhood is not a place for business. It is legal to have a recovery house in this neighborhood for Falls Township zoning law." And then it says, "If you agree, I urge you to write and express your concerns and to attend this meeting." I did not write the letter. I am here to voice my concerns. I live, uh, at forty-one right across. I would agree with everything in the letter. It is thirty individuals coming and going every day. Doors never locked. They walk right in. Always different people, all different states. When they first moved in, it looked like it was a young family with like a baby and a dog. They probably were there for like a couple of weeks, left, and then that is when the activity of, of different individuals arriving throughout the day and night. They have these moving vans, it looks like. They're vans that, that's where twenty or more people will come and go in and out. Um, some people wait at the end of the street in their cars. Some people walk down to the end of the street, hop in the car. You see them come back hours later. It's just very suspicious activity. And there are, I know that there are homes with little kids right across playing. I'm sure that there are other neighbor here, uh, neighbors here to express their concerns. Been watching it for a long time and I've been wondering what could be going on. Um, it does not look like they have a individual person that is always staying at the home as, I don't know if recovery homes kind of have like a head person that's supposed to be supervising people. Um, sometimes it's empty. Um, it was empty for a couple of weeks and hundreds of Amazon packages piled up in front of the home. Very weird. Um, and now it's really just different people all of the time, in and out. I don't really can tell what's going on. Um, and, uh, very concerned about it. And that was why I was here.
So I think we became aware of this about a month ago, and I believe that these same people bought more than one home and are doing the same thing. Um, they didn't come and say that they were bu- built, putting a recovery home in and so forth, and that's what they did. Um, and it's not right. It's not legal, I don't think. Um, we do have an ordinance where they can and can't. Is that correct?
No.
This was reviewed, uh, over the last couple of days and earlier today, uh, by the zoning officer and Chief Code Enforcement Officer, uh, Mr. Tekeeta. Uh, the property is Zoned NCR Neighborhood Comfort Conservation Residential District. The proposed use qualifies as a group home and it's a permitted use under two oh nine dash twenty B NCR, uh, use regulations and the definition of a group home. Uh, it's been looked at. The zoning officer says it's a permitted use. Uh, we're continuing to look at it with the, with the zoning officer and the Chief Code Enforcement Officer, but that's the initial, the initial review.
Didn't we pass something a couple of years ago?
We did. Um, we did pass something with regards to group homes. Group homes are when there's more than a certain number of people residing at the house. Um, this appears to be, uh, five, uh, people. Um, it, it meets the definition of, of family. As you know, um, the, uh, the definition of family is, in the law, it's a little, we, these are the discussions we've had previously, is a little different than what we may traditionally think of. It is five, five or less people who are living together at their home. They're taking their meals together. Uh, they're in a common living space. Uh, so under the initial review of this, it does meet the definition of a group home and it is permissible in this district. But as I said, we're continuing to review it and gather more information with, uh, with Mr. Tekeeta.
Is it possible that we can monitor this with the number of people and such?
You, you can, but again, the township needs to be careful not to be treating this group of residents different than another group of residents who are also, uh, making their, their home together. But we are, as I said, we continue to review this with Mr. Tekeeta, continue to gather some information and can probably, um, and hopefully we'll have some, some more on this in the coming days and weeks.
Are they using this as a home or as a gr- a meeting? He says there's thirty people and people coming and going every day and the busloads that pull up. That doesn't seem like a home.
Again, um, we have discussed this with the zoning officer and the Chief Code Enforcement Officer. He's made a determination that this is a permitted use at this property. It's permitted as, as a group home. He visited the property, uh, to confirm the condition of the property on the nineteenth of September. They met with the property manager, walked through the home and the site. Uh, they, he indicated that both the house and the site were in, uh, in, in good order. There were no code violations present. Only five beds were in the home and there was no storage or additional materials in the home. That would indicate an intent to house more individuals. Uh, periodically throughout the day, a supervisor will visit the home and once a week they will have group meetings with another group home in the living room for approximately an hour. The company runs the same model from another location in the township and he indicates they haven't received any, uh, any complaints.
Um, I will, I don't know if you're allowed to tell me, um, are the, when you say property manager, is that the two individuals named in the letter?
I, I, I don't know.
No clue. Um, because I cannot tell if there, if you say that there are five permanent residents, I do not see individuals there all of the time to be able to tell like, oh, that person's part of the people that live there and then the twenty-five other are just coming and going. It is very spread out of different people all of the time.
Yeah, and I think what it's important for you and everyone to understand is when it is five or less, the law doesn't allow us to treat them any differently than five or less other people who are living together and making this their home. The law doesn't us allow, doesn't allow us to say, well, you can't have people come into your house. You can't have visitors. You can't have things along those lines. Uh, the Fair Housing Act doesn't, doesn't allow us, us to do that. Um, there's, there's different distinctions between sober living facilities and group homes. Uh, that's why, again, from the initial information we've had over the last, uh, four or five days, six days, uh, that's the determination that the zoning officer made that it's a, it qualifies as a group home.
Um, so I didn't look into the difference between a recovery home and a group home. Um, I would imagine the person who wrote the letter may know more about that, but a group home is not for recovering addicts and such, right?
It, it, it can be.
It can be, okay.
It's just if it's five or less, it's just, uh, again, it's any five people who are choosing to live together in, in this sort of setting. And I think one of the things that Mr. Tekeeta said in, in the email I was just reading from is if, if we go into a, a house for a visit and there are, a, a room that's meant to be one bedroom has four bunk beds in there or something along those lines, then that's a different setting and that could be the basis for the zoning officer to say, they're not using this as a home. They're using it, uh, as something different. Uh, but that's why he indicated the house isn't set up in any different way. There's only five beds, so.
Okay. Um, I guess my, my request personally would be if the township could allocate maybe some resources to monitoring it, because if you do monitor it, you will see the, the vans and the random cars of, like I said, twenty-five to thirty people.
But, but again, with all due respect, if you have twenty-five or thirty people come to your house to watch the Eagles next Sunday.
That is a different, uh, scenario that I would say that-
But the law, the law doesn't consider it.
Okay. That's a little crazy. These are two or three AM vans coming in and out.
Okay.
But that is all I have to say.
As I said, it continues to be under review by the zoning officer. Uh, we are mindful of enforcing the codes of the township and not violating anyone's, uh, rights. So we're, we're walking that, that, uh, trying to strike that balance at this point in time, but it continues to be under review.
Okay.
Uh, Judy Kozar?
I'm the same issue.
Uh-huh.
And actually I have, uh, something that you actually-
Thank you. This is what I was asking about, Mike. Pass this around to Mike. It's the ordinance that we passed.
Right. And I, I understand the ordinance that we passed. This is, this is different from that ordinance.
Please read it aloud so everyone knows.
No, I'm not going to read it aloud, but thank you for your-
You're not gonna read it aloud, that's what-
You're free to read it aloud.
The law restricts group homes to the township's low-density residential zoning district and sober living environments to the highway commercial district. So I don't understand. We, Pinewood doesn't seem to be in either.
Mike.
Is that, is that so? Did you hear what I said?
If it's five or less, they are considered a, a family. And as the email was said from, uh, the zoning officer and the Chief Code Enforcement Officer, it's, it's permitted. That ordinance was meant to deal with larger, larger, uh, numbers of, of people living in a group home.
But this is larger number. Believe me, we live on the street. They have Sprinter vans. Do you know what Sprinter vans are? Two of them with New Jersey plates. Yeah, and they drive up and down the street. Somebody comes three o'clock in the morning, four o'clock in the morning. It, it, I can't believe that you're saying that it's a family.
Uh, I'm not. The law is.
Oh, the law is saying it's a family?
Yeah.
And what does the Board of Supervisors say? That that's how it goes?
We have to follow the law.
They have to follow the federal law. The Fair Housing Act says five or less people living together who are taking their meals together, that are living in the same home. It's not modified. It's not set up like a dorm room, that they're considered a family.
Okay. And they bought it as an LLC, Serenity Recovery Residences. And that's a, that doesn't say anything? That it's a recovery residence? That's how it was bought? That's the LLC who bought the property?
It does not make it illegal.
Mike, does the people have, um, are they registered each one as an individual?
I, no, just like-
Because the claims are it is thirty-some people.
Just like you're not registered at your home.
But they're tenants though, right?
But there can be tenants who are living in rental properties. There are rental-
Well, how do we know they're a family if we don't know who they are?
The, the law doesn't require you to have, uh, all be blood or all be-
When you move into Village Pembroke, you have to put down your wife's name and your children and whatnot. So if they're, if they're paying for room usage there, they would have to write their name down.
There are many rental properties in the township that could rent to, uh, a, a couple who aren't married. They may have another friend or two living with them. They may have some, so the law, the law recognizes, uh, that you don't have to be, uh, blood or by marriage to be considered as a, as a family.
Is this a business? I mean, if it's a business, wouldn't it be treated different than a residence?
It's like anyone who's leasing their property. It's like anyone who's renting property. We have comm- we have rental properties throughout the township.
So basically there's nothing that we can do?
We're not a hundred percent sure. It doesn't sound good, but we're not a hundred percent sure yet.
Okay, is this going to be investigated? Is this going to be an ongoing thing or?
The, the zoning officer has reviewed it. As I've indicated, it's ongoing. We're obtaining some additional information, but as of right now, his initial review is that this is a permitted use.
Okay, and we're also like right around the corner from an elementary school. I don't know if that has anything to-
I don't think it has anything to-
That has nothing to do with it. Yeah, yeah. So I'll, I'll let someone else speak. You want to speak, Kim? Yeah. I don't know.
Uh, we have M. Menino?
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name's Margaret Marino. I'm sorry, I didn't have time. I was roughing there. Um, I'm a, one of the owners at three nine nine Thorn Ridge Drive, so I'm here to talk to you about the upper part of Thorn Ridge Drive this evening. Uh, good evening and thank you for your service. Uh, what I'm hoping for tonight is, um, a clear timeline and some real solutions that I can count on so I can feel comfortable with my grandkids in my own front yard. I have been coming to, I've raised my concerns about the upper part of Thorn Ridge Drive. I've lived there for sixty-seven years, um, to the Traffic Advisory Board since two thousand fourteen. You can find the minutes from those, um, past meetings online if you'd like. Um, the bottom line is we never met the criteria for traffic calming solutions to be implemented. Since the last reportable accident on eight ten twenty-five of this year in front of my home, I now have a Falls Township Police Department case number, um, which I received from Officer Finelli. Um, he's been working with us. Um, this is about the tenth accident that has happened directly in front of my house. Um, people say to me, well, people from the township say, well, that's not that many. Uh, I'd like to ask you guys, how many accidents you've had in front of your house? I don't care if it's over, you know, ten years or forty years. Um, there has been at least ten. Um, I'm picking this up, uh, from my parents who tried to get some solutions done over the years, but the traffic, uh, committee was just implemented in two thousand fourteen. Um, they were not successful. I have not been successful. Um, and now, uh, I'm trying again, along with my daughter. Uh, the issues on the upper part of Thorn Ridge Drive start at Tanglewood when you come off of Penn Valley Road. Um, there are four sharp bends that change direction in quick succession. These curves make it difficult for drivers to see what's ahead and nearly impossible to pull out of the, the three side streets, which is Teaberry, Twin Leaf, and Thimbark, thank you. Um, and it has always been nearly impossible to pull out of our driveway because of the sight distance issue. Um, we got to understand that, you know, Levittown is not the same as it was when Levitt built it. Um, he didn't, he just expected everyone to park their cars in the driveway and have these nice windy, you know, suburban streets. Um, now we have cars parked on both sides. The part where, um, our, our bend is, um, the road narrows compared to the straightaway on the drive. I know the bottom part of the drive has its own issues. Um, so speed is an issue. It's twenty-five miles an hour now. Um, we've had, like I said, a history of accidents there. Uh, we've put in, um, a right-to-know with the township. We're still waiting to find out about that, um, to get some information about posted stop signs as well as accidents. Um, the problem is that most of the accidents are non-reportable. It's not a reportable accident until someone's injured. Um, the last accident that I talked about almost took out my whole family. And my children, my grandchildren were playing in the front yard and, um, the curb was jumped, came across the, uh, the neighbor's sidewalk, across our driveway, across the lawn. Um, my daughter had just called the kids up who were roller skating and riding bikes, um, to have Slurpees or smoothies. So, uh, you know, it was only by the hand of God that, that this accident, we're not talking about something different. Um, like I said, the first accident I can recall, um, was in nineteen eighty-five. A tree was taken out. My parents' Cadillac was taken out. Uh, there's been many, many accidents, um, right at that area. Um, also, you know, there are Amazon trucks now and, you know, all kinds of vehicles, buses. Two, two cars cannot pass with cars parked, cars parked. Two cars cannot pass at the same time. So that leads to yelling, cursing, getting out of people, you know, people getting out of their cars and yelling at each other. Um, and the drive does take the hit for the whole, for all of Thorn Ridge. Everyone uses the drive. So I know that there are many solutions out there. Um, speed limit change, uh, right now Falls Township Police Department has put up speed spies. Um, but the problem is that all of Thorn Ridge Drive is twenty-five miles an hour. Um, the bends, the four bends that I've talked about, there are ten total bends on Thorn Ridge Drive, but I'm concerned with the top four. Um, you know, the speed limit needs to be reduced because I can kind of see the writing on the wall that this report is going to come back from Falls Township Police Department and say, oh, you don't meet the criteria. Well, they don't ticket anyone or, or they don't even have, you know, anything, any kind of radar. Um, and they don't pull anyone over until you're ten to fifteen miles over the speed limit. So that means no one gets in trouble, even if they're going forty on the drive. So the, the first thing I think needs to happen is the speed needs to be reduced and then Falls Township can go ahead and see what the spy, the speed spy is doing on these curves. Um, I don't want to go into all the solutions because I'm sure you guys are well aware of them. Um, I honestly really don't think that I'm asking too much since I've been asking personally since two thousand fourteen. And like I said, my parents, um, Betty Russell, has been asking since she used to put cones to pull out of her driveway. So, uh, in closing, the township is well aware of this. The police department is well aware, well aware of this. And I just feel like we really need to be proactive, because let's face it, if something happened to any one of my family members, including my grandkids, um, every politician, police officer, you know, concerned citizen would be saying, why didn't Falls Township do something about this? They knew about it on paper since two thousand fourteen. So I'd much rather be proactive than reactive. I understand that engineering studies and, you know, like I said, I was at the traffic board meeting. They couldn't vote on anything to bring to the supervisors because they didn't have a full staff. So they couldn't make a, they didn't, all the committee members were not there. Um, so I just want to be able to live at my house comfortably, um, safely, uh, without fear. Uh, I want to be able to teach my kids how to ride my bike like my grandparents taught me on that same sidewalk, which I can't do right now. So I'm looking for your support, your help. I know that we had brought to you before that there are grants available um, for this kind of thing. I know the budget is coming up and, uh, thank you for letting me speak.
Yep. Uh, this, we learned about this, we, when I say we, I meant the Board of Supervisors at our meeting two weeks ago. Uh, we did direct the manager to start working with the police chief as well as the traffic engineer to try and come up with some solutions where something that we can do. I mean, honestly, the speeding cars, and I know I said this last time, the police in Pennsylvania can't use radar, local police, only the state police can. So to pull, you able to pull somebody over, you have to be, am I correct with that? That we have to be driving the same speed they are, you know, I mean, a police officer. So that's why ticketing them is not an option really. Um, lowering the speed limit, I don't know how we do that. Is that something we can do on our own, Mike? Do you know?
Um, depending on what, depending on what road it is and depending on whether it's a adjacent to a county road or a Penn Dot road, we'd, we'd have to look-
And honestly, that's probably not a real solution. I mean, that's probably, you know, it would might make you feel better, but I don't know. People don't pay attention to the speed limit now on any road. Um, but they are, you know, maybe striping the road or something like that. I know when I was on the Traffic Advisory, they talked about some of the bigger drives, simply striping it makes it seem narrower than it is and that slows people down. This is, uh, Penn Dot has a handbook, a whole guide on traffic calming, and that's one of the big, the best solutions. This is, Penn Dot has a handbook, a whole guide on traffic calming, and that's one of the big, the best solutions. I know they don't let you use stop signs for speed control and stuff like that. Not saying that stop signs might not help, but like I said, the manager was directed, Mr. Shepherd's our new manager, and he is working with the police chief and our traffic engineer to try and come up with something. So, and I think we have your contact info, correct? Yeah, so we are, they are working on some kind of solution. I know everything, nothing happens overnight. That's the biggest, most frustrating thing of all of this. But they are actively doing something. Nicole?
Good evening. Sorry to kind of reiterate everything, but I am going to take my time to say this again. Hello, again. My name is Nicole Pasky. I last attended the board meeting on September 9th. During that meeting, I went over my concerns regarding the upper Thorn Ridge Drive and the traffic issue that extends from Tanglewood Lane to Teaberry Lane. Like my mom said, on August 10th, we were outside playing when a car destructively hopped the curb, drove across our driveway, our, in our lawn where myself, my children, and my husband were all playing. This accident could have been tragic, but this is only one of many accidents at this location. This one, though, has caused me the most distress. People use Thorn Ridge Drive like a freeway due to the wide roads, and they maintain their speed around the tight, narrow, blind bends. Four of the bends are located on the top of the drive. My home sits between two of them. This area has been a problem for decades, as my grandparents owned this home for 67 years before I did. We have seen it all. Parked cars towed, parked cars totaled, then had to be later removed. Trees hit that have been taken out, pedestrians nearly killed, verbal and physical altercations, hit and runs, et cetera. All as non-reportable accidents. As an accident only becomes reportable when an injury or death occurs, is that what we're waiting for? For the last 11 years, there has been multiple attempts to address our concerns about upper Thorn Ridge Drive. With the board of supervisors, police, and other committee members within our township, all have been made aware of our concerns and have acknowledged the issues with this particular area. Ideas have been presented and discussed, but that's as far as it goes. We understand these things take time and approval is needed, but 11 years has gone by, and now we want action. At the last meeting, I had asked for consideration to apply for the state grant through the Department of Community and Economic Development to help with the improvements. Has that have been voted on, or is it even being considered at this time? Or has a budget been discussed regarding this area for the improvements to be approved during this budget season? At the last meeting, Chief Whitney had discussed a new technology for disguised speed radar to be placed in the area of concern. This will allow a true transparent assessment of the speed in this area. Since then, those devices were placed and are collecting data, but I asked before for a collaborative approach for, to make our community safe. Those devices were randomly placed on light posts where the speeding issue will not be assessed properly. This is not collaborative. We see the issues day in, day out, and day out. Specifically, know where these speed devices should have been placed. But they're installed, so I guess that's considered doing something. Why not have a true collaborative effect to address the issue with those who actually live it and are affected by it? The entire drive's speed limit is posted at 25, with 10 tight, narrow, blind bends within a two-mile distance. As Falls Township Police speed guns to track true speed are only dedicated for state police. Therefore, township police really only stop vehicles for speeding once they exceed 15 miles per hour over the posted speed limit, which means a speed problem in the area where the new radar is set up will only alert an issue if people are driving 40 miles an hour in a residential area. My suggestion would be to lower the speed limit around the bends to 10 to 15 miles an hour with the 25 mile an hour speed limit for the rest of the drive. This way, we can truly see the speeding issue on how cars easily are able to lose control of their vehicles because they go fast down the bend, they catch speed down the hills, causing them to dodge moving cars, parked cars, walkers, buses, delivery trucks, bikers, and other things, making those roads unpredictable and even more narrow than they already are. According to Falls Township Article 2, Section 203-7, Thorn Ridge Drive's speed limit was established on November 1st, 2005, at 25 miles an hour. Why was this speed chosen for the drive? Was an accurate speed assessment done before and after the speed limit was implemented? How can we be assured that the proper speed limit was chosen for our area without post-implemental data? If that is up to, if it were up to my data collection, I would say the speed posted does not meet the safety concerns of the residents who live on the drive. As I stated before, I believe, I understand that there is a process, but I do need clarity on a reasonable timeframe for implementing some initial safety measures. According to the Traffic Committee, the necessary supplies are already on hand to get certain items started. I was informed the committee was to plan on a vote and bring it to the board of supervisors. Has that vote occurred? We cannot afford to let 11 years pass without meaningful action. What is the timeline for moving forward? What steps in the process can the community expect so that we can see that our elected board is actively planning and taking responsibility for our safety?
All right, thank you. Again, the timeline, we don't have a timeline. You know, the chief is aware of it. Our manager's working on it with him, and the traffic engineers. I don't know, lowering the speed limit might make it seem like it's going to help, but people don't pay attention to the speed limit now. Other than that, you have to come up with some real solutions. Like I said, striping the street might be an option. Other than that, I don't know if there's a whole lot that can be done. Adding stop signs is not an option for speed control.
No, I understand.
I mean, I know it's frustrating, and I don't think it's just Thorn Ridge. I know you had a very, very scary situation in front of your house, but I think if you talk to half the residents in Falls Township, they're going to tell you speeding on their streets is a problem.
But nothing can be done? I mean, if so many residents are worried about it...
Yeah, they're going to come up with something. And as for the grants, we have a grant writer on retainer that writes grants for us all the time. That's not something we have to vote on. If there's grants out there, they find the grants. It's not a budget issue. It's not a financial issue to stripe the street where if that's a solution. Maybe even painting chevrons on the street. I mentioned in a staff meeting, I said we had another road in the township, Austin Drive, which is really bad with speeding. When we come up with a solution was to narrow it by striping both sides and putting chevrons here and there, the residents absolutely lost their minds and absolutely not, we don't want that. That's going to ruin the aesthetic of our street. So there are solutions like that. How effective they are, I don't know, because we haven't really done that. On some streets, we have, but, you know, we are actively going to do something. We are, Mr. Shepherd?
Yeah, if I could just say, Mr. Denson, for everybody here at the meeting tonight, after the last meeting when you were there, I actually had a chance to go out and take a look at the road. I'm new to the town, so I'm just learning my way around, so I did have a chance to take a look at it, could see where your concern is with the hill and also the bends. From my perspective, I want to make sure we get it right as much as we can. I don't want to rush into something and just do something for the sake of doing something. You had mentioned a grant through the state. I don't even know what we would apply for. So until we know what we're looking to do and we think those solutions will work, I don't want to haphazardly just do something. That's my suggestion. I think we should figure out what we believe is the best solution, see if we can implement it, and if we can. I have no problem talking to the residents, the people that live there. You live it every day. You've lived it for years. That's a great point, because it's important for you to have, to have input into the potential solutions. Some of those solutions people may not like. Maybe there's additional signage, maybe things that people won't like because it'll go in front of their house. We could, we could look at all those things, but for me, I'm new. This is about my third week on the job. But for me, I do want to try to get it right if possible and take a look at traffic calming measures. I do think our police department is hampered because of the radar issue. We're not the only one. It's the state, unfortunately, where we can't do that. I think that could help a lot. We have to figure out what will work if we can't use that as one of our tools.
What do you mean, the radar issue?
I think if we could run local radar, I just came from a job in New Jersey, we could run local radar at the local level. So when we did that, people knew we could be anywhere running radar at the local level in housing plants. We can't do that here. We just don't have that tool in our, in our toolkit.
Well, we do have a speed radar right now.
But we can't use it for enforcement. It's not good enough for enforcement.
Yes, it's collecting data, you're right.
The enforcement, the collection of data is great, but the enforcement piece, when you, when you're in New Jersey, at least someone knows theoretically that a policeman could be there somewhere where there's a speeding complaint. They can show up at any time and run radar, and, you know, people get the message pretty quickly. We just don't have that, so.
I just don't think that, you know, one thing is going to be the solution. It needs to be a couple of things. We don't know. The speed limit on other drives have not been reduced. So we don't know if that's going to be something that's going to be reduced. We can't nix that out.
You're 100% right.
We can't nix out the stripe of the lines. People don't like it. It's not a popularity contest.
But I agree with you 100%.
It doesn't matter how it looks like. It's supposed to, it is there for a reason, and that is to reduce speed or, you know, implement safety measures, period.
And it could be multiple facets, right? So again, I didn't want to just kind of go off. I wouldn't recommend, let's just go do something to placate people. Let's try to figure out what works. Maybe if it's three things, we need to do three things, or four things, or two things.
I understand it will be a timeline. My thing is, at this point in time, it's been, you know, a month since the accident and since we've been working with the traffic committee. Is anybody bringing that to your attention?
Yeah, we had a conversation about it just before we came in here.
Okay, so is that voted on?
I talked about in Trevo's, I was in Trevo's, and I said they have speed limit signs with flashing lights around them, so you can't not see that speed limit sign. And then I said, you know, do people want that in front of their house? That becomes the next issue.
I understand that. I mean, I would just really appreciate if we, the homeowners who are dealing with this, be taken into consideration when you decide to come up with a plan. Because, you know, you don't, I don't come into your job place and tell you how to do your job. So you're going to come into my place that I live and tell me what's best for me. I am going to be able to give you more information than you just doing a self-assessment around a drive. But I do appreciate you taking the time to do that, so thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Sarah Kirk?
Hi, my name is Sarah, and I'm here to talk about the data center that's getting built along the Delaware in Falls Township. I was at the last meeting discussing some of my concerns about the data center and the lack of available information to the residents of Falls Township. This was kind of dropped on us in a way that I'm very uncomfortable with. It was initially said to be a warehouse that was going to, Amazon might be renting it, we weren't sure. And then suddenly, at the beginning of this year, it became a data center. I have three main concerns that I want to address. The first one is the amount of electricity that this data center is going to use. At the last meeting, I had asked how many machines were going to be in this data center, and there wasn't an answer. So I did request to have that information released by Amazon, so we at least have an idea of how much energy this is going to consume on a daily basis. From looking at other data centers in the country, and I know everyone is different, ours is special and unique, but it does show a direct increase of bills. So we, as the township residents, are going to have an increase in our bill because we do not know at this point how much energy it's going to consume. We do know there are power plants on site that are going to give it energy, but no one's been able to answer if that's going to be enough. And if it's not going to be enough, then we're going to have our supply that we use every day at our work, at our schools, at your house. That's going to now be stressed by this giant data center. And I've read, besides the increased bills that all of us in here are going to feel, it also can create sporadic blackouts because now there's such a heavy surplus on our energy infrastructure that now we're paying more money for less energy. I have concerns that that's what's going to happen here. So I do need that. I would really appreciate that information if we can find out how much energy is going to be consumed every day by this. Second, the water. And I have had conversations, last meeting, we had a conversation about my concerns about the water treatment there. So to keep these, these machines cool, they use a ton of water. I have heard that this data center is going to recycle that water, but I still have concerns. Is the water that we drink going to be affected? I know that we, we collect from up the stream of the way that, what we collect above north of where this is going to be, but do we have, or is there going to be a way that we can monitor, is this water safe? In six months after this opens, is our water going to be different than when this data center opens? I think the public deserves to have some type of something checking on it, whether it's DEP or something on a local level. I want to make sure my water's safe, that I'm bathing my son, and my son's in, that he's drinking. And then third, I just, I'm concerned about the environmental impact of these data centers as well. They use a ton of electricity, like I said. There's also going to be power plants on site creating the energy for it. What is that going to put into our environment? I, you know, I chose to live in Falls Township because I was trying to find somewhere safe to raise my kids, that I could send them to a good school district. I tried, this is, this is what I found. And now to think, are my kids going to be in dirty water? Are they going to have lights at night sometimes? And now, what kind of air are they breathing in? We already have to contend with the dump, and now I don't want another data center there. So I do want to have that information if possible. Can we get that information from Amazon?
Yeah.
How many machines, how much water consumption are we looking at?
The number of machines, I know how big it is in, it's 600 megawatts is what the final, something around there. So that's the size that it will be.
That's massive, yeah.
Now, as far as electric bills going up and down, that's not, your bill's not going to go up. I mean, that's regulated by the Public Utilities Commission. So a lot more goes into the price going up and down than just what is being used in Falls Township. Like, we're on a grid with about 10 other states, I think, maybe more. So that grid is, the way that, do you understand how the grid works? The grid is managed by a company, I can't think of the name of the company that manages our grid. You know, and they, you know, guide where their power goes, where it's needed most and such.
But if they have to send more to this area, then they're going to increase the price because it's a...
But they're not going to increase it just in Falls Township, it'd be in...
No, it'd be all the townships around them.
Yeah, right, but they're not going to, you know, this data center was going somewhere.
And we're the lucky chosen one.
Yeah, yeah, this is, I don't think it's a bad thing. As for water, the only thing they're using water for is cooling. It's no different than every business in Falls Township that has air conditioning on a bigger scale with cooling towers and such. The water isn't necessarily polluted, and the water that they're getting down on that site is coming from the river. So it's not affecting anybody's drinking water.
Is there a way that we can monitor that, though? Because from what I'm gathering, these data centers, they are affecting the water.
I don't know what you're hearing that, but I mean, there's thousands, all the businesses in Falls Township that are using water, including the high schools, the schools, for cooling. If that's water, has a better chance of effect than anybody, but there's, it's not polluted water. It's just for cooling.
Mr. Dens?
Yes, sir.
Just for your information, the water company, they're required on an annual basis to do a drinking quality report, right? So that's annual. That's required by the EPA. So you can monitor, anybody can monitor, year to year, how those parameters would change. And they test for everything. If you've ever looked at that report that comes out on an annual basis, you know everything they test for, and it's significant because it's required by the federal government. So that would be your, kind of your measuring stick where you could start, and that's at least on an annual basis. You're going to know if there's any impact, not necessarily because of the data center, but if there's any change in water quality, for whatever reason, you could look at that annual report.
Okay, yeah, that, that is good to know.
So they've treated their own water on site. U.S. Steel did. They had a water treatment plant, which is no longer active. Morrisville, you may see, is ready to build a new one down there for their water.
Yeah, the link for that, to do public comment, doesn't work. I have tried to do it about 10 times, because I have public comment.
Yeah. So, you know, they'll be getting the water from the river and treating it down there. It's really not going to affect your drinking water. The other thing I'm going to say is that I don't think even, it's not contaminated water. I mean, they're not making a product down there. And as for emissions, the only emissions they would have would be from the standby generators. And I think the majority of them are natural gas. There might be some diesel down there, but, you know, that would be the only emissions produced by a data center.
It has power plants down there, and they're putting out emissions, too.
The power plants, they don't have a power plant. They have substations, just that they have all over the place to regulate it. But that's not generating electricity.
It is to funnel energy into the data center. I talked to somebody who worked on it.
The Dominion Power Plan is right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Well, that's, you know, that's, again, that's controlled by the, the grid, you know, how much power that needs to use.
But I think it's dismissive to know that we're getting this like 4 million square foot data center, and we don't think it's going to have an impact on how much electricity is used.
Right. No, I don't think it's going to. I think that what was down there before this data center used just as much, if not more. Because what they're doing now is a lot more efficient than what they did 20 years ago, 30 years ago, 40 years ago.
But we have more on the electrical grid now.
Yeah, a lot more.
Yes, that's why, even though it might use more...
Every time we use our cell phones, everything we do on social media is, you know, these data centers. Every time you go to the supermarket, it goes to a data center. Every time you use your debit card. No, I know, but this is, you know, this wasn't something, there's nothing we can do about it now. It's been approved.
Yeah, but it was approved under the public assumption that it's a warehouse.
No, it was not, absolutely not. It was approved a long time ago when North Point first came here for warehouses.
As a warehouse, yeah.
Right, as warehousing. And then they came back to us, and they were going to put a data center, and we, and we approved it.
But did the public have any comment on it?
It was posted just like every other thing was, yeah.
The first post about it was in the spring, and it was already approved by that point.
No, no, no. It was been posted for our agenda. It had to be voted on at a meeting. So it was online, and it was posted in the newspaper that we were having a meeting.
All right, well, so what I'm asking now, since it is approved, there's nothing we can do. It's fast-tracked by the governor. I, we really deserve to know how many are going there and how much electricity is going to be used, so if we could get that from us.
Again, it's, okay, we know that it's 600-megawatt data center. So that's how much, you know, we can do the math and figure out how much power it's going to use.
We certainly can.
When it's at 100%, we'll find that out for you.
That's what I want, thank you.
Got it.
Ms. Kirk, I just want to add too, because...
Ms. Kirk, I just want to add too, because one of your questions was about emissions, and we were able to confirm that these standby generators will be monitored by the DEP, those emissions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's all the names on the list?
I'm sorry, I came late.
Go ahead.
I was, I...
Five minutes.
Okay. I was home. I actually live on Pear Tree Lane, across the street from the recovery house, not the group home. And Alex McConville. I'll preface this with saying I'm sober and in recovery, so I have nothing against addicts, but I bought this house in Falls Township in an NCR district, which means that there are no recovery homes. Yes, there's allowed to be group homes, but group homes by definition of Falls Township are non-transient, and they have attendant adult supervisors that live there with them. This is a transient home of addicts. The people that bought the home own Reprieve Recovery in Ewing. After they leave Reprieve Recovery in Patient Rehab, they go to a sober living environment, which is considered a recovery home, which is not zoned for Pinewood, which is not zoned for NCR. I feel like, obviously, somebody is greasing the palms of Falls Township, because there's no...
Nobody's greasing anybody's palms, that's ridiculous.
There's no way that this could be approved, okay? The owner, the house is registered to Serenity Recovery Residences.
Right.
The owners own Reprieve Recovery. They own recovery homes in Florida. If you say this is a group home, you are starting a precedent in Falls Township where group homes are going to say that they are, that recovery homes are going to say that they're group homes, okay? There's vans carting people back and forth. I am a single mother of two kids, living across the street, I'm a nurse practitioner, I deal with addiction, and I am sober myself, okay? This is not the right place for it. This, this gentleman with the glasses on, I was listening to you at home with my kids, and I'm like, I have to drive there and talk about this. You're, you're allowing this, I don't know why, there's more than five people I live across the street, okay? If every single thing that the owner that bought this house, Jessica Terranova, who's actually Jessica Cook, who's married to Chris Cook, who's the CEO and CFO of Reprieve Recovery, every single thing that they touch is about recovery, and you're going to say it's a group home? Am I allowed to then say to Falls Township, I purchased a home in an NCR neighborhood? You're allowing a recovery home that you are allowing to say group home? They wear Free Yourself t-shirts on the back of themselves. They have sprinting vans up and down the street. They have meetings, congregating a bunch of people. It's not about parking, it's not about noise, it's about against the law. It's illegal to have a recovery house in an NCR neighborhood. Sure, group homes, yeah, they might, they eat their meals together, they might, they're not related, there's different men every single week, different men. Last week, there was, I, I could tell you, a transient amount of men. So what you're doing is you're starting a precedent now, of Falls Township, to allow group homes to be group homes, and, and by definition of a group home, residential facility used as living quarters by any number of unrelated persons requiring special care and any attendant adult supervisors, create a non-transient residential setting. If these people are there for 30 days, or 10 days, or 15 days, that's, that's transient, that's not non-transient, that's not a group home, okay? I understand the Fair Housing Act and disability, well, I'm in recovery, too, I live across the street. So am I disabled, am I handicapped? How far are we going with this, okay? Sober living environment, by Falls Township definition, is six or more individuals reside together either voluntarily or by court order, in order to recovery from, recover from drug, alcohol, and/or substance abuse, as an interim environment between rehab and reintegration. You're saying that they eat meals together, you don't even know who they are. We have people live in this neighborhood that see 30 men up and down the street all the time. Two guys I saw two weeks ago aren't there anymore, they were smoking out front. Listen, I have no, I am, like I said, in recovery. I have empathy for addicts, and I'm also a nurse practitioner. So I get it, but they don't belong in an NCR neighborhood. You made the law for a reason. Back in 2016, you had an ordinance that you said sober living environments are restricted to the Highway Commercial District, but you are making an exception by this, this group home, when it's not a group home. They're not mentally and physically handicapped with, with adult superintendents sitting there. Maybe there's five or more when you looked at it, but every neighbor on this street is telling you that there's not five or more. I'm telling you, you will start a precedent in Falls Township, and it's going to be a disaster. So then, all of us on the street that bought into an NCR neighborhood, can we sue Falls Township if you allow a recovery home sitting in front of us, because you said it was a group home? They own Reprieve Recovery. She's a certified recovery administrator. She, the house is registered Serenity Recovery Residences. Every single word is recovery, where's the word group? Where's the word handicapped? It's not there because it's not a group home, okay? It's a recovery home, and you can call it all it is, but I'm going to make some, some noise about it. I live across the street from them, by myself with two kids, okay? You're not even looking at me, and you're the one that was saying that it was all passed. It's not a recovery, it's not a group home. Here's the zoning map for Pinewood, NCR, it's not allowed to have a recovery home, okay? Here's their website, Reprieve Recovery. They talk about it, they say, okay, after you, after you leave here, you can go to a return home or to a sober living environment. Where do you think the sober living environment is? It's on Pear Tree Lane, okay? And you're saying it's a group home? Because five or more unrelated people are having meals together.
Ms., you have to wrap it up, one.
I just really wanted to say...
I understand, you made your point, I understand.
It's wrong, it's wrong.
I don't, I disagree with you.
And so what's, it can't, this can't be passed.
We're not passing anything.
Well, he just said, Matt Taquita has said it, Matt Taquita emailed me and said, by, by what it looks like right now, it does not support the permit. All of a sudden, it's like, oh, you know what, it, it is, five or more unrelated people having meals together. It is a group home. Did you look at all the words recovery around everything about these people? Sir? Did you? Did you look at the word recovery around everything about these people that own it?
As I mentioned before... We are reviewing this...
No, you said that it was passed as a group home, is what you said, that's why I got my car and drove here.
And what I said was, the definition of family under the Fair Housing Act...
It's not about family.
Ms., let him speak.
Okay, sure.
So it's, it's, we're continuing to gather information with the zoning officer and the chief code enforcement.
And you looked at the definition of group home versus recovery? Sober living environment, transient, non-transient?
I have, I have.
Adult supervisors for each person?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three. You ready? NP Falls Township Industrial Minor Subdivision.
Good evening, Mike McGinnis from Begley Carlin here on behalf of North Point, I have Jeremy Michael participating remotely, and I have Dave Boginsky from Gilmore Associates sitting to my right. We'll try to be very brief with this. We are here for a approximately 10 and a half acre subdivision off of what we've labeled the parent parcel within the KTC. There is no development currently proposed as part of the minor subdivision. This is being done to facilitate realignment of utilities. We have no waivers that are identified, everything that's listed in Mr. Jones's letter is a will comply. Happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Doesn't get much more straightforward than this. Are there any questions? Mr. Galloway, he's remote.
Uh, no question.
Ms. Mullin?
No question.
Mr. Palmer?
No question.
I have no questions. Mr. Clark, do you have anything?
No, this is pretty simple and straightforward.
This would be Resolution 2025 hyphen 21. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Oh, any public comment needed on this? I apologize. None? Is there a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. Item number four is being pushed to November. Item number five is a consideration of approval adopting a resolution establishing 2026 minimum municipal obligation for the police pension plan.
Yeah, Mr. Dens, we have actually, you'll see the next three are all related to the MMOs, which is our minimum municipal obligation, and our finance director is here tonight. Just to give a brief overview, I'm sure you've heard this before, to present any questions by the board.
Ms. Rukoff? Good evening.
Good evening. We normally do the three of these as one item, is that okay, Mr. Clark?
Yeah, it certainly is.
Okay.
Well, there are three different resolutions.
There are three separate resolutions...
I think normally Ms. Rukoff just tells us about what the three are.
That's fine, you can go over it.
I will. I'll summarize them, and then I'll give you each individual dollar amount for the pension plans. Per Act 205, the township's minimum municipal obligations to our three pension plans must be certified to the board by the last business day in September. Resolutions must be adopted for these obligations, and they will be included in the 2026 budget. So the first pension plan, the minimum municipal obligation for our non-uniform plan is $8,557. That's the first resolution. You need the number, or do you have to vote on them separately?
Bet you just want to give the other two numbers also? Then they'll have all three for the three plans.
Okay. The second pension plan is the PMRS pension plan, and that amount is $205,725. Our third pension plan is for our police, and the MMO for the police pension plan for 2026 will be $3,474,006.
All right. Any questions from board members?
No.
No. Any public comment needed? So we have Resolution 24, they went out of order somehow, 23, 24, and 25.
That's correct.
We can do these all at once, Mr. Clark?
Yes, you can.
All right, is there a motion to approve Resolution 23, 24, and 25?
No move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next, we're going to advertise for the audit of our 2025 financial records. This is pretty straightforward as well. Is there any questions from board members?
No, no question.
No? No, any public comment? No hands, is there a motion?
No move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And item number nine, and this is stuff that we're required to do, Mike, again? Mr. Clark?
Yes.
All right, we have change orders 31, 30 through 33. What's the total amount here?
I got you. James Gates, Grace Construction, the total amount for Rycon is $85,777.19.
All right, any questions from board members?
No question.
No question.
No.
Any ta, public comment needed? See no hands, is there a motion?
No move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Mr. Shepard, can you poll the board, please?
Ms. Mullin?
Yes.
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
And Mr. Dens?
Yes. Thank you. Item number 10, consideration of approval of change order number four from Allstate Mechanical. We're not doing this one?
We're not doing this one.
All right. That takes us to item 11. We have a change order from, that's all for...
That's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Jones Construction, change order number three, in the amount of, what's the amount here, 253, or 412,000?
Yeah, so the one for, for Jones is strictly related to if additional inspections are necessary at the building.
Yeah.
And they may or may not be needed, but obviously, this gives the opportunity, if he needs to do any inspections related to the site, this will give him the authorization.
Any comments from board members, Ms. Mullin?
I just want to clarify, Ms. Mullin, that I believe the change order amount is 65,000, and the proposed contract amount is now 45,000.
That's correct, change order three, 65.
Mr. Palmer?
No, no comments.
Mr. Galloway?
None.
Is there a motion?
No move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Mr. Shepard, can you poll the board again?
Ms. Mullin?
Yes.
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
And Mr. Dens?
Yes. We have a change order for the Martinsqueerique project, this has been a long time coming, this one. Any questions from board members on this one, Ms. Mullin?
I am just, uh, just mentioned that it's in relation to the Falls Township municipal bid, or building project? This, does this have anything to do with the building?
I think that first sentence is just a typo.
Okay.
I think it's, yeah, I think maybe the cut and paste, it's strictly related to the stream project.
Okay, thank you.
I met with Mr. Jones to go over this.
Thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
No.
And Mr. Galloway?
No question.
I have none, is there any public comment? No hands, is there a motion?
No move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Mr. Shepard, can you poll the board?
Ms. Mullin?
Excuse me.
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
And Mr. Dens?
Yes. Item 13, consideration of approval of the safety manual for the Falls Township Municipal Building. What is this?
So this is the safety manual for the town, and this predates me, but we, we just finalized this manual probably right before I started. My understanding is the manual that was in existence prior to this, is an older manual, this has been updated. The safety manual's been reviewed by our safety committee, recommended for approval, the unions have been involved in the review, and also our township solicitors. So the recommendation is to approve this manual, obviously, it's a living document, changes can be made in the future, but I think what we have in place here covers a lot of
can be made in the future, but I think what we have in place here covers a lot of the, you know, current issues in safety for all of our employees.
All right, thank you. Any questions from board members?
No, no question.
Ms. Mullin?
No, I'm fascinated by this. I'm not even kidding, I could read this whole thing from the top. I like this and I like, like, emergency preparedness plans. Love it.
You sound like Richard DePulito right now. Sitting at home watching a weather channel, waiting for a storm.
Looks great.
Is there any, there's no public comment, I guess, is there a motion?
No move.
Motion made, is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 14, consideration of approval of resolution for John Shepard to be appointed as the Township Open Records Officer. This is pretty straightforward, he's the new manager, he's the new open records officer. Any questions?
No.
No, any public comment? No, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2025, that's 26?
No move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a proposal from Remington Vernick for the traffic signal upgrades on Hood Boulevard at Pensbury East. Guess this is much needed, is there any questions from board members on this one?
No.
No.
None? Is any public comment needed? Is there a motion?
No move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Mr. Shepard, can you poll the board?
Ms. Mullin?
Yes.
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
And Mr. Dentz?
Yes. Item 16 is the consideration of approval of the auction of surplus vehicles. We had one, two, three, four, five vehicles totaling $23,450. Any questions from board members? Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
Ms. Mullin?
No.
Mr. Galloway?
No.
Any public comment? Is there a motion to, I guess we're just accepting this money, right? We're selling these vehicles.
Accept the bids?
Yep, is there a motion to accept these bids in the amount of $23,450?
No move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have motor starter replacement for the pool, this is a big one. We had three bids, and the lowest bid being Armor and Sons Electric in the amount of $31,250. Is there any questions for Mr. Andrews who's here from board members?
Yes. Is this money allocated in the budget?
Yes, it's a 2025 approved capital project.
And does that follow the tuition or the membership, does it pay for that, for next year's membership?
Capital projects typically do not go off the membership fees, they're more for the day-to-day costs, you know, salaries and chemicals and stuff. This is a separate project in the capital budget.
Was there any grants available for this?
No.
With the county pool that got closed, we're kind of like the only pool in town for this area, so did you reach out to them and see if they can maybe assist or anything with some help?
In terms of staffing or?
No, like.
Money?
Money. Partnership or helping out or sending our members over to our pool or?
Oh, yeah, we definitely, they definitely recommended people, when they closed, they did put a post on Facebook, they recommended, you know, Pinewood is one of the, you know, joining pools that they could join, yes.
Did you happen to see enrollment go up this year?
Yes, yeah, our numbers did go up this year. Our revenues were up in almost every category from our projection, so it was a good summer. Obviously, our chemicals were a little higher, yeah, it depends on when, we were real hot, but overall, we did really well, I think, this summer compared to the past couple.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Galloway?
Nothing to surprise, I see that the pool side came in way under what was budgeted, so the access on this bid is easily covered by that, and I appreciate you noting that
Correct, thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment needed? No? Is there a motion to approve this contract with Armors and Sons Electric in the amount of $31,250?
No move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Mr. Shepard, can you poll the board?
Ms. Mullin?
Yes.
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
And Mr. Dentz?
Yes. All right, we have, are there any appointments tonight, anyone? I don't have any?
No.
No.
No? Takes us to item 19, the minutes from August 25th and September 9th. I was not, oh, I was at the, never mind. What month is it?
This is September. We weren't at August.
I wasn't at the August meeting. That's not in here.
Yeah, it is.
In the back. Everything's backwards tonight. All right, I did not attend the meeting, but I did watch the video, and excellent minutes as always, Mrs. Pullen. Any errors or corrections from board members?
No.
No.
Mr. Palmer?
No.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
No move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right, Doug, let's get the engineers report, sweet, like, there's not a whole lot in here. I'm not going to put Doug on the spot and make him go over every page of this. Is there any questions from board members? You can see the highlighted stuff. Any new land developments?
We received one new land development and two new earth disturbances in August.
Any questions from board members? Comments?
No.
None? All right.
Well, just one, what's going on at the golf course?
Oh, the golf course, there's a pond dredging operation, just desulting one of the ponds there on the golf course.
All right, thank you. Takes us to everybody's favorite, the bill list. We have three bill lists tonight. We have a bill list in the amount of $2,596,729.12. Any questions or comments from board members?
No.
Any public comment needed? Is there a motion to pay the bills?
No move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Mr. Shepard, can you poll the board?
Ms. Mullin?
Yes.
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
And Mr. Dentz?
Yes. We have a Campbell Durant bill list for our labor attorneys in the amount of $22,198.10. Any questions from board members?
Mr. Chair, I would just like to repeat my request that this, the labor attorney bills be reincorporated back to the bill list.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members? None? Any public comment? No, is there a motion to pay this bill, $22,198.10?
No move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Mr. Shepard?
Ms. Mullin?
Yes.
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
And Mr. Dentz?
Yes. We have a Jones Engineering bill list in the amount of $252,495.80. Any questions or comments? None, any public comment? Is there a motion to pay this bill?
No move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Mr. Shepard?
Ms. Mullin?
Yes.
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
And Mr. Dentz?
Yes. You have manager comment tonight, Mr. Shepard?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
None? Board comment, Mr. Galloway?
None.
Ms. Mullin?
I just want to compliment our staff on the events of the weekend and let the public know, for anybody who missed it, that Supervisor Boraski was presented with a plaque for his nine years of dedicated service to the Touch a Truck event, and I'm sorry if you were going to do this, I just thought that.
It's okay, you can do it, I wasn't going to.
We're just both so excited for him and for what he's done over nine years, he's raised over $140,000 for various charities, and we're just very grateful to everything that he's done, and the events were wonderful. So thank you to everyone from the township who worked on them and to all the residents who attended.
Mr. Palmer?
No comment.
And I already asked Mr. Galloway, right?
Right, no comment.
Repeat, Ms. Mullin said, excellent job, again, $140,000 in nine years is great, and, you know, all in charities that directly affect our local community, so with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Is there a?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.